I'd like to call the Tuesday, September 21st Papillion City Council Meeting to order. Would you please take the role?
Sunday, Mumgarth, Gaines, Glover, Dorski, Klug, Stube, Ingberg.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unbroken, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Do we have an affidavit of publication on file?
We do.
And a current copy of the Open Meetings Act is on the counter when you came in. We have no presentations tonight. Ms. Powers, administrator's report, please.
Thank you. Just a quick update to the city council. The L C R A met last week. Melissa Panko was reappointed as the chairperson. The authority directed city staff to update the redevelopment plan to be project-specific for Phase 1 and to go out for redevelopment proposals for Phase 2. City staff is working and sending out, publishing the RFPs, and they'll be accepted through 4:00 PM on November 12th. And more information can be found on the city's website. So if any of you know anybody that would be interested in doing, submitting a proposal for Phase 2, what's your reminder is the former recreation building, the city white building that's currently serving as a temporary city hall. Go ahead and give them the information and Phil is the authority director, so if you can direct questions to him on that. The grand openings for the Portal and Big Elk Recreation Areas were held today. The city values its partnership with the N R D and all the work that they put into opening these two new beautiful facilities. Just a reminder, most of Portal is currently in the city limits. In the process to annex, the small portion that's not and Big Elk has started. The annexation ordinances are expected to come to city council in November and be effective in December. And as you know, Public Works Director Jeff Thompson has accepted the position of Project Engineer for the Sewer Agency. His last day here at the city will be October 1st. He's out of town this week, so we will be presenting him with the proclamation at the next city council meeting. We wish Jeff well in his new position and look forward to working very closely with him, since Papillion is 1/6 of the sewer agency. And as such, Jeff's Public Works Director position is posted, and we expect to start the application review process in early October. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda? Most by Councilman Glover, second by Councilman Ingberg. Do we have any proponents or opponents? Any council discussion? Please vote.
Sunday, Mumgarth, Gaines, Glover, Stube, Ingberg. Six yeas, zero nays.
Motion passes. Next is Item D1, Ordinance 1942. An ordinance to amend Section 205 218 Fence Regulations of Article 34, Supplemental Site Development Regulations or Chapter 205 Zoning Regulations to provide regulations for residential trash enclosures. The applicant is Councilman Steve Sunday. It's the Residential Trash Enclosures Amendment. This is on the agenda for introduction tonight, so I'll ask a council member to introduce, but based on some timing, the way it was published, there was also, it was anticipated the second reading could have occurred. So we're going to open the public hearing as well tonight, but we're going to leave it open then, and then we'll have the public hearing next time. So if by chance somebody was here to speak on it, we'll allow them, but we'll keep it open for next. But is there a council member that will introduce? Introduced by Councilman Sunday. And as I mentioned, the way it was published, we are going to go ahead and open the public hearing, but then we'll keep it open until the next council meeting. So I'll open the public hearing. Are there any proponents or opponents on this tonight? Okay, so that'll remain open. Item D2, Ordinance 1950, An Ordinance to Approve a Request for a Change of Zone from CC Community Commercial and R4 Multi-Family Residential to CC Community Commercial and R4 Multi-Family Residential for the properly legally described as lots 1 through 4, 6, 7, and Outlet A. 72 place generally located southeast of 72nd Street in Shram. The applicant's Patio Park LLC. Is there a council member to introduce? Introduced by Councilman Ingberg. D3, Ordinance 1951. An ordinance to approve the vacation of South 71st Street and Flint Drive Right-of-Way. Abutting lots 2 to 6, 72 place with title divestment and the abutting property owner, Papillion Shram Roads Partners LLC. Is there a council member that will introduce? Introduced by Councilman Glover. Item E1, Ordinance 1945. An ordinance to amend Chapter 195 Water to allow for the implementation of a residential meter replacement program. It's a public hearing. Are there any proponents? Any opponents? Or anybody neutral? Close the public hearing. Item F1, Resolution R210178. A resolution to approve a final plat for the property legally described as lots 3 to 10, Gold Coast Heights and Rose Street Right-of-Way, generally located northwest of Bristol Street and West Gold Coast Road. The applicant is V K B Properties LLC. Is there a motion to approve Resolution R210178? Most by Councilman Gaines. Second by Councilman Stube. Any proponents or opponents? Welcome.
Kyle Hawsey with E and A Consulting Group, 10909 Mill Valley Road, Nebraska, representing the applicant, and I look myself up for any questions.
Thank you very much. Mr. Mumgarth.
I have a question. Okay. I saw that the, in the planning commission, there was quite a lot of discussion about egress, ingress, the roadway. How many roads are you going to have going in, drives, I guess, are you going to have going into that?
There'll be two access points.
They're all going to come out on that one road there that curves? Okay, I'll just tell you upfront what my reaction is. I don't like to use that land there that is very valuable or could be used for commercial and offices and those things for apartments. But I realize that it does have access problems. You know, what, why is it that you, how many, how many units are you going to put in there?
182.
Okay, I'm currently thinking that, yeah, this lot is not really set up too well for commercial because of the limited access. But I would hate to see the rest of that stretch go, anything other than commercial.
That particular lot, I'm not exactly sure when it was originally platted. It had a road platted in there. I think about eight commercial lots within that site. And I don't know if it's up there for 10, 15 years. I'm not sure how long. And nobody took any interest in those lots from a commercial standpoint. So I think at that point in time is when they decided that this isn't a good spot for commercials since it's not being used, since it's been available for so long, and looked for the residential component.
Yeah, I, you know, I think originally the plat, the platting there, there's a roadway that comes in from the west, from 90th Street, I think.
From Bristol.
Someplace off to the west, there's access, the commercial lots are supposed to be accessed by a roadway. I mean, west of you, west of yours. And conceivably, it would continue all the way over and access this one.
I think this, the way that this was originally platted was a cul-de-sac street that came.
That's correct.
And it, you know, for the west property.
Okay, well, I'll just tell you outright, outright that that's my hesitancy is to allow a commercially viable lot. I mean, it's commercially viable because, let's face it, it's right there on the highway. A lot of traffic goes by there, a lot of eyeballs. So I'm hesitant to.
Never taken up maybe the access issue that it was maybe tucked in there a little bit too far, not very convenient to get there. We do have two access points on the Bristol, and I think the main reason is from a fire safety point to make sure that we have good circulation for service vehicles to get in and out.
Well, I'm very hesitant to let what I see as a, as a commercial lot go into apartments, but I understand your concerns and I'll keep thinking about it. Thanks.
I've got follow-up questions. I, I shared the same concerns when I was looking at this with the access to begin with. Let me ask a more pointed question. Why can't there be an access road on the, on the west side of this property connecting with Gold Coast?
They already have existing residential lots platted along the coast.
Okay. Has there been any effort to maybe buy one of those lots for that purpose or?
Those lots already have homes built.
I drove by, I'm familiar with it, but it looks to me like there could be a road put in there if somebody wanted to.
We do have some grade on the west end too. We graded out. I don't know if there was, buying those lots from.
Well, the grading can always be overcome, right? I mean, that's always, always an issue with any project. Another point I'd like to ask you about is, are you familiar with the fact that there may be a development on the other side of the highway in the not-too-distant future? And wouldn't that affect, wouldn't that affect the, the potential development for the purposes that Mr. Mumgarth just mentioned for this property in just a year or so?
As far as commercial?
Yes.
I think the property to the north, that is set up for a large amount of commercial uses. Probably take those commercial uses that could be in this area on the northeast side.
Okay, and the final question I had is where is the green space in the development? I don't see it in your maps.
The pool.
Right.
The clubhouse pool, and then we have like a cabana seating area inside, right in the middle of the side as a whole. And then we have a residence that runs throughout the block.
So, again, I, I'm a broken record on this, and it's not just you, we're cramming all these people in a small area and there's no recreational outlet other than a pool. That's, that's it. And, but we have seven buildings with 26 units in each building, 182 units, crammed in tight, and only one way in and one way out, and that's on Bristol. So I, right now, I can't support this. In fact, I see that we have two council members not here tonight. I know that Luann would like to be here for this issue, and I think Gene always has something to say about apartment development. So I'm going to propose that we table this, and if you could, could I do that?
I think you'll get what you need anyway. Tonight's just the second reading.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So we'll have the public hearing tonight, and then the next council meeting, we'll have council discussion and vote, so you'll be okay.
I thought this was a vote tonight.
Oh, I'm sorry. This is a resolution. You are correct.
Okay.
You are correct.
So I'm going to move to table it so that the other council members that have an interest could participate?
Okay.
This is an important issue. It's on a major corridor of our city, so.
So is that a motion?
Yes.
So we have a motion to table. Is there a second? Second by Councilman Gaines. Keep looking at Mrs. Thielen, make sure I'm following my procedures right. So we got a motion and a second on a motion to table.
Yep. Roberts was a order. We'd call it a motion to postpone to a date certain.
To a date certain?
Yeah, so presumably that'd be the next meeting.
Is that your intent, the next council meeting?
Yes.
Mr. Gaines, is that your understanding? Okay, and so is that a debatable motion, or do we go straight to a voters' or discussion?
I think you can have debate on it.
Okay. Any, any council discussion on the motion to table? Mr. Stube.
The developer's representative, that causes you guys a hardship relative to a delay to essentially the first meeting in October, which I'm not sure when that would be.
We have the plat that goes along with this as well. And so I believe that the plat needs to go through another reading and vote as well. Is that correct? Or is this going together?
It would be October 4th.
No, October 5th.
Yeah, that's, council wants to table it and have a discussion.
Mr. Ingberg.
You know, we don't normally like to, you know, postpone things down the road. But it's a suggestion, because I think you'll find that there's some concern of Mr. Sunday and Mr. Mumgarth, and I guess speaker Councilor Gaines are the two that are calling, but you might want to let everyone know that it might be wise to have some other options that may be presentable, that would get this, the votes needed to proceed.
As far as options?
Well, as he said, see if there's a way to provide another place of access. And, and the other suggestion made by Councilman Mumgarth and Sunday. Just, I don't want them to come here on October 4th and say, this is what we want, that's it. Because I don't know there'll be, there would be enough votes. I'm just suggesting that maybe it'd be wise to be prepared to discuss, give and take, to make it a little more palatable for those who may, would not, as it says today, may not vote to approve it, is all. Okay, thank you.
Any other council discussion on the motion to table? Mr. Mumgarth.
Well, okay, Mr. Sunday's concern about the lack of green space, I think has some value. How would you do that? How would you redraw it to get some green space?
With the site, we probably, I don't know how we would increase that green space, to tell you the truth. We had some discussion last night at Planning Board about the location of parks that are currently within this neighborhood. I believe there's one not too far to the west, that might be one school location. I can't remember exactly where that was at. And then, any additional parks that are in the area, and Trumbull Park is across the street. There will be some additional green space with that going as well to help with that concern of lack of green space.
I know that when you're, as a developer, you're always concerned about the, the cost. And so you determine how many buildings you put in there to pay for what you're doing. I would suggest that in the next two weeks, you sit back and see if maybe you can minimize, reduce the number of units there in some fashion, somehow increase green space. Even though I realize, I mean, you're dealing with a limited plot, that you don't have a lot of area there at all that you could, but, you know, it's kind of, what kind of green space can you create that would be of any real value to anybody? But would you sit back and consider those questions?
Any other council discussion? I do want to note, though, there's other related items on tonight's agenda for this item. There are actually about four related items. The others are ordinances. So assuming you're going to probably follow the same logic, I think what we'll propose, if Mr. Thielen's good with it, is go ahead and act on your motion that you've just made on this item. And then when we get to the first item, we'll take one motion for all three, and that way everything stays in sync, if that's a, follows with the intent of what you're looking for. Okay. No other council discussion, so just to make sure we got it right, the motion is to table until the next meeting, which would be October 5th, first meeting in October? Okay, please vote.
Sunday, Mumgarth, Gaines, Glover, Stube, Ingberg. Six yeas, zero nays.
Motion passes. Item F2, make sure I get them right. So this is the next item. I'll go ahead and read all three of them, assuming, so everybody knows what we're doing. And then we did publish for a public hearing, so do I, do I need to open the public hearing since we published?
Yeah, we probably better open it.
Then, let me just double check. That's the only one that has a public hearing, I believe. Bear with me one second. 11 and 12. That's the only one with public hearing. So we'll table, we'll open the public hearing. So Item F2, Resolution R210179, a public hearing and a vote. A resolution to approve a special use permit to allow multifamily residential as a permitted use for the property legally described as lots 3 through 10, Gold Coast Heights and Rose Street Right-of-Way, generally located northwest of Bristol Street and West Gold Coast Road. The applicant's is V K B Properties. Note, the applicant's still here, but I'll open the public hearing. Do we have any other proponents? Any opponents? Good, come up. And if you'd state your name for the record.
Hi, everyone here. Longstreet. So we said, in fact, that I live in that area, and it seems like apartments would be in eyesore and not fitting with the commercial aspect of that area. I think Mr. Sunday is a very good point that now that actually is developing on the north side, it seems like there would be a lot of tag-along development that would, you know, be given impetus by what's going on on the north side that likely would be in high demand for commercial after it happens. So it seems like this is not the ideal time to be personal with this, that's all.
Do we have any other opponents or anybody neutral? If not, I'll close the public hearing. Bear with me one second, because I'm trying to account for all of the items. Rose Street related to it? Okay, okay. All right, so I'm going to go ahead and read the items, the other items. So F2 is the one we just read that we just had the public hearing on. And then later on, we have F11, Ordinance 1943. An ordinance to approve the vacation of the unimproved part of Rose Street Right-of-Way in part of the northwest quarter of the southeast quarter of Section 34 Township 14 North Range 12 East. Of the 6:00 PM Sarpy County, Nebraska, titled thereto retained by the city of Papillion. And then Item F12, Ordinance 1944. An ordinance to approve the conveyance of title for Rose Street Right-of-Way to be vacated by Ordinance 1943 from the city of Papillion to V K B Properties. Mr. Sunday, did you have a motion to make? Okay, so F2, F11, and F12, motion to table until October 5th. Is there a second? Second by Councilman Gaines. Any discussion? Please vote.
Sunday, Mumgarth, Gaines, Glover, Stube, Ingberg. Six yeas, zero nays.
Motion passes. Item F3, Resolution R210180. A resolution to approve a motion to reconsider for Ordinance 1912. An ordinance to amend Chapter 205 Zoning Ordinance, Article 36, having to do with off-street parking. This one's requested by Councilman Ingberg. Is there a motion to approve Resolution R210180, a motion to reconsider?
Motion, but I also want the council to know, I'm sure they saw it in the packet, but since we rarely use reconsideration, I just want everyone in the council to know that I'm asking for this motion for a reconsideration of Ordinance 1912, which is an ordinance we approved previously for off, considering off-street parking because there's a typographical error in it, and I felt it'd be the easiest and quickest way to repair it without, I'll make that motion.
Thank you. Do we have a second? Second by Councilman Stube. Any proponents or opponents? Any council discussion? Please vote.
Sunday, Mumgarth, Gaines, Glover, Stube, Ingberg. Six yeas, zero nays.
Motion passes. So the related item then is F4, Ordinance 1912. An ordinance to amend Chapter 205 Zoning Ordinance, Article 36, having to do with off-street parking. The applicant's the city of Papillion. Is there a motion to approve Ordinance 1912? Motion by Councilman Glover. Second by Councilman Sunday. And again, the, the typographical error was mentioned specifically. The words "any use of on-street parking shall be in accordance with the" is what's being deleted. Any, so is there a motion to amend Ordinance 1912 to correct that error? Motion by Councilman Ingberg. Second by Councilman Glover. Any council discussion on that item? Please vote.
Sunday, Mumgarth, Gaines, Glover, Stube, Ingberg. Six yeas, zero nays.
So the motion to amend passes. So the motion is amended. Any council discussion on the motion as amended? Please vote on the motion as amended.
Sunday, Mumgarth, Gaines, Glover, Stube, Ingberg. Six yeas, zero nays.
Motion passes. And we've got a very similar item, so the next two are in the same vein. Item F5, Resolution R210181. A resolution to approve a motion to reconsider for Ordinance 1923. An ordinance to amend Section 205 208C of Article 33 Supplemental Use Regulations of Chapter 205 Zoning Regulations, having to do with the accessory uses for civic use types. Again, requested by Councilman Ingberg. Is there a motion to approve Resolution R210181? Most by Mr. Ingberg, second by Councilman Sunday. Any discussion? Please vote.
Sunday, Mumgarth, Gaines, Glover, Stube, Ingberg. Six yeas, zero nays.
Motion passes. So with that reconsideration, we're back to Ordinance 1923, Item F6. An ordinance to amend Section 205 208C of Article 33 Supplemental Use Regulations of Chapter 205 Zoning Regulations, having to do with accessory uses for civic use types. The applicant's the city of Papillion. Is there a motion to approve Ordinance 1923? Motion by Councilman Gaines. Second by Councilman Ingberg. And again, the staff's recommending the motion to amend for that typographical error. Section 2 needs to be replaced or read. That Papillion Municipal Code, Section 205 208, as previously existed, is hereby repealed. So that's the, that's the change. Is there a motion to amend Ordinance 1923? Most by Councilman Gaines. Second by Councilman Glover. Any discussion on that? Please vote on the motion to amend.
Sunday, Mumgarth, Gaines, Glover, Stube, Ingberg. Six yeas, zero nays.
Motion to amend passes. So the motion's amended. Any discussion on the amended motion? Please vote on the motion as amended.
Sunday, Mumgarth, Gaines, Glover, Stube, Ingberg. Six yeas, zero nays.
Motion passes. F7, Resolution R210182. It's a public hearing and a vote. A resolution to approve a Class I liquor license for elegant edge events doing business as the Fireside, 841 Terra Plaza, and manager application for Natalie Kotrick. Hopefully, probably wrecked that. It is a public hearing. I'll open it. Do we have any proponents? Is the applicant here? Okay. Any opponents? I'll close the public hearing. Do we have a motion to approve Resolution R210182? Motion by Councilman Stube, second by Councilman Ingberg. Any council discussion? Mr. Mumgarth.
Ask the applicant to come up.
When you come up, if you'd state your name for the record. That way I know how to say it right.
It's Natalie Kotrick. I'm the owner of Elegant Edges.
Okay, now do a commercial.
A commercial, okay. Well, we're using this space called the Fireside, formerly Karen's Fireside, for any events. And we currently have our monthly, the Papillion Lions Club meeting there once a month. And we've been hosting graduation parties, weddings, baptisms last weekend. So just kind of a multi-event, and we provide the catering through our business as well.
And so how long have you been open? How long have you been open?
We, the Fireside, we actually just took over in July, so it's been, oh, it was open prior to that. We purchased it from Jewel Maven.
Sure. It's been a longstanding Papillion business. Really glad to see you doing well over in Terra Plaza.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve Resolution R210182? Most by, second by Councilman Sunday. Please vote.
Sunday, Mumgarth, Gaines, Glover, Stube, Ingberg. Six yeas, zero nays.
If anybody is confused, I am too. We'd close the public hearing. I had a motion and a second. We had the council discussion. I was thinking we're still in public hearings, so I called for a motion and a second again. Whoever got it first is the one we'll give it credit to, so, thank you. F8, Resolution R210184. A resolution to approve the revision of Exhibit F3 of the Third Amendment North Shore Commercial Subdivision Agreement. Is there a motion to approve Resolution R210184? Motion by Councilman Stube. Second by Councilman Ingberg. Any proponents or opponents? Council discussion? Please vote.
Sunday, Mumgarth, Gaines, Glover, Stube, Ingberg. Six yeas, zero nays.
Motion passes. Item F9, Resolution R210187. Motion passes. Item F nine, Resolution R twenty-one zero one eight seven, a resolution to establish twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two uh salary ranges for management and exempt positions. Is there a motion to approve Resolution R twenty-one zero one eight seven? Motion by Councilman Ingberg. Second by Councilman Glover. Any proponents or opponents? Council discussion? Please vote.
Sunday, Mumgarth, Gaines, Glover, Stube, Ingberg, six yeas, zero nays.
Motion passes. F ten, Resolution R twenty-one zero one eight eight, a resolution to approve the establishing of COVID-nineteen paid sick leave for full-time and regular part-time employees. Is there a motion to approve Resolution R twenty-one zero one eight eight? Motion by Councilman Stube. Second by Councilman Gaines. Any proponents or opponents? Council discussion? Please vote.
Sunday, Mumgarth, Gaines, Glover, Stube, Ingberg, six yeas, zero nays.
Motion passes. We've taken care of eleven and twelve, as those are tabled. That's all the regular agenda items. Um, I don't think any committees have met in the last two weeks. Any comments from the floor? When you come up, if you'd restate your name for the record.
Edward Weniger, Walnut Creek. Um, you, you kinda blew through the water meter request for public comments. Um, but my comment is a little broader than that. I was just curious, what, at what level does something rise the uh where it would be something outside of the city council meetings for communicating with uh residents about the water meter, since it affects everybody and, I guess, I have several things, but what sort of communication it has about the water meters so far?
So far, um, the, all of the public hearings, I mean, the agenda items are all published. We have the uh, we have the system where people can subscribe to the agendas, be proactively notified of all of the items. Um, the whole packets have been out there, the information's been out there on all the agendas, and then, of course, we publicize them on YouTube, so they're, the, all the discussion, the full packets are available to the public.
So there's a, there's an underlying assumption that people are paying attention to the city government and how it machinations and how it works like that?
Say that again.
Like, there's an underlying assumption that people are, are privy to this and like understand how all this stuff works.
Well, the underlying assumption is all of the information we deal with is available in the public realm. It's all published publicly. Um, state law's got a lot of information about how it has to be out there. We follow that. We go a little above and beyond that with our subscription services. Um, providing it online, some of the things we don't have, we don't do. And yes, the, one of the assumptions in everything we do and every agenda item is there are, that the public has a burden somewhat to understand what's going on.
I'm just saying, I'm, I know I'm probably not going to be keeping up on that kind of stuff. So I was just wondering what the opposite side of that is, right? How do you get the word out that everybody's getting their water meters?
On any agenda item, there is some burden on the public to be, take advantage of the information that's available. I mean, we covered fifteen items tonight.
Sure.
Um, so, yeah.
We've approved this, and so there will be steps taken by the city to notify property owners when that event will take place, correct?
Assuming, assuming council approves it, correct?
So could you kind of walk through what, what may take place relative to notifying property owners uh with regard to if and when?
You want engineering to take it?
But that's after the fact, right?
After, yeah. Your S can be four, yeah.
Broad motion about like, all the, play, city council interact with residents and.
Yeah, the, the before is um civic engagement. People have a responsi, to be, part of citizenship is people having um, I don't wanna say a burden, responsibility um, and a duty somewhat to be engaged, and our assumption is people are doing that, and if they're not um, there is the balance of how much can we spoon food, spoon feed if people aren't interested. There is that balance.
PDFs on a city council website do not seem to be the most uh progressive way of doing that. I guess that's my, kind of my point. Just a general comment. Go ahead.
We got your comment. One of the things I wanna be careful of, and we're probably venturing a little bit too, is um the public comments are, um, this is state law. Um, items on the, uh, this is just general education, items in the uh public comment period, those weren't specifically published on the agenda. And since they're not publicly uh on the agenda, we really can't discuss them. I think we're starting to get there a little bit, but your point's taken um, uh, about uh public engagement and people being aware of it at a time, and cities got a burden to communicate, and residents have a, have a responsibility and duty to um not be spoon-fed and uh be proactive as well.
Uh, man.
Yes.
Uh, just to point out too, that wasn't mentioned, that I'm not going to go off on the agenda item per se, but it has to do with your question. This particular subject wasn't a rushed, any kind of judgment. We started working on this probably, we started chair of the finance committee, our committee started to work on this over probably, it's been about two years ago. And we've worked on it off and on it for the last two years, so it wasn't something sudden. And then we got to the most recent history and had finance committee meetings about it and spoke with council about it and tried to get it to a place where it was suitable to come to you. Now, uh, this could sound kind of dissenting, and I don't mean it the way it's gonna sound, but the mayor kind of mentioned it. When I first got elected in nineteen ninety-two, and I, and I'm gonna mention this because it's kind of important. I asked, what the fir, what the first question I asked the city council president leaning over and asking my very first meeting was, because that question came up about notifying homeowners and things and everything. And I asked the council president, I'm new at this, you know, what else could we do? And back in those days, ancient times, we didn't have the internet, a lot of ways we have to comment now to educate people. It basically was, we posted it three places and had it in the newspaper. And his answer to me, I'll always remember this, is you do as much as you possibly could do. Make sure that the information's available. But he said, but he told me, he said, Steve, the thing you have to remember though is, all you could do is provide it. There's a certain responsibility as a citizen of a community, council seek it. And that's always stuck with me. So please don't take it as condescending. But, but that was a very valuable lesson I learned my very first meeting, that you have to get the, the information, education out there. But you also can't do everything, and you can't make sure every resident is familiar with it. They need to find out about it, also what you're doing.
And there are systems out there, I know of my, like, going over on time or whatever, but like uh Mr. Green and Ms. Powers have been great to work with on the water meter item. Um, there are things that are out there to facilitate more online communication besides, I don't think less talk of the plan is that venue. I think there are systems though that would enable more online interaction under the city's control that.
Yeah, the system under a city control that uh people have a, the ability to subscribe to and get proactive conversations is not Facebook, and it's not Let's Talk, but, you know, we do have a lot of people that subscribe to that. Thank you. Do we have any other comments?
I didn't want, sorry, other, also related to water. Has there been more talk about privacy and uh vendor scrutiny?
Go ahead.
As part of that. That's part of the water meter and larger conversations. Has there been more talk about privacy and vendor uh security?
Again, I wanna be careful we're not into an active dialogue, 'cause it's not a published agenda, but I do wanna take the comment, so, okay, I appreciate that. Um, any other comments from the floor? Any council comments? Just a couple of things from the last uh couple of weeks. Um, we did, Ms. Powers and I, we had an annual review with the Papillion Community Foundation. We established that, I think, about a year ago. Uh, kind of the end of the year, they do a review of what, what are they doing, how's, how's the relationship with the city and how's that going, and that was a good one. Couple of their board members were there. Um, also, um, the Leadership Sarpy, if you're familiar with that, the, the annual leadership group from the Chamber of Commerce, they do a tour of all of the cities, so we had the bus tour this last week. Um, then um met with the defense, a number of the defense contractors in the area. Uh, they wanted an overview of the Nebraska-Vietnam Veterans Memorial Project that we're in the partnership with, so went down and met with them and gave them an overview. And I think a number of the contractors are gonna step up and give some financial support on that project, so that was a good event. Um, had a ribbon cutting for uh Papillion List of South High School for an item they're doing as an art project. Had a couple of groundbreakings. Um, one of the neat events, um, a couple of council members were there. Uh, for the fourth year in a row, the Papillion Area Historical Society at the Portal Schoolhouse has done a naturalization ceremony, so there, I think there were about thirty-three individuals that uh became official U.S. citizens through the naturalization process, represented about twenty different countries. Um, I bet most U.S. citizens couldn't pass the test they took. It was, it was, seeing some of the questions, it was tough. Um, some memorial library had a ribbon cutting for a play and learn center. And then the Chamber of Commerce had their annual economic outlook today, and then it was mentioned by Ms. Powers the opening ceremony for both uh Big Elk uh Lake and Portal Recreation Area. That was this morning with the NRD and Gamon Parks. Uh, note just for people who are, uh, if you're into kayaking. Uh, one of the uh unique events at Big Elk is there is a kayak launch, and it's, it's actually wheelchair accessible. So somebody could take their wheelchair down, get into their kayak, and get out on the lake, and then get back out. And then Gamon Parks pointed out that almost all of the lakes, bodies of water in the region have the same uh mix of fish. Uh, the catfish and the big mouths and that type of thing. Um, they've seen a need for a couple of different species that do well here. Um, but they, they haven't been doing a lot of, and they've been doing that both at Big Elk and Portal, so we'll have smallmouth bass and uh yellow perch in those two, so that'll be really unique for the area, so glad to have that partnership with Gamon Parks. Any other council comments? If not, is there a motion to adjourn? Motion by Councilman Glover, second by Councilman Gaines, please vote.
Sunday, Mumgarth, Gaines, Glover, Stube, Ingberg, six yeas, zero nays.
Motion passes. We are adjourned.